Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners Monday, March 7th, 2022 meeting. At 5:00, we had a work session. And I would like to let everybody know that we are going to be missing Owen Etheridge. He was here for the work session, but he unexpectedly had to leave. So he will not be with us this evening for our board meeting. First, the first call to order item is going to be the invocation and pledge of allegiance. I'd ask if our Commissioner Selena Jarvis would lead us in the prayer and the pledge this evening?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we are so thankful to live in such a beautiful county and to have so many things that remind us of your beauty. We ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight as we do the work of our county. Be with our visitors and give them safe travels home and be with Commissioner Etheridge as he travels home and as he's not feeling well. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Jarvis. Okay, the next item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda this evening? If not...
Do you want to just consent agenda at that time?
We can do that at the time. Make that adjustment then.
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Okay, the next item is public comment. The public comment is a time that we allow individuals to come up before this board. And you have three minutes to talk about whatever you'd like, uninterrupted. We'll listen. You know, comments, questions, if you don't like something, but it's your time. We have one person signed up. And I'll ask, when I call your name, if you could come up front, state your name and address for the records. And you'll see a light up there. The green light will let you know to begin. When you see the yellow light, it's saying you've got about 30 seconds, kind of wrap up your thoughts. And then the red light, please finish your comments up there. So the first person I have is a, let me get to some. Marta Vilshovska?
Correct.
Good? All right. All right. Thank you.
You did great for the first time.
Thank you.
It's super hard for everybody for the first time.
Again, if you state your name and address, just for the record.
Just right here?
Yeah, just speaking, you're good. You're just speaking to Mike with your name and address.
Good evening to the board members and the good citizens of Currituck County. I would like to take this opportunity...
Real quick, just to begin with, again, if you just state your name and your home address for the records, start off with that.
Marta Vilshovska, 119 Hillawood Drive, Powell's Point, North Carolina.
Thank you.
27966.
Thank you.
I would like to take this opportunity to address you regarding a very important and timely issue. The issue I want to present today is regarding the unprovoked attack on Ukraine by the Russian military. My name is Marta Vilshovska. Me, my husband, Volodymyr Vilshovski. Our two children, 10-year-old son and three-year-old daughter, are residents of the Currituck County. My husband is the owner of the painting company, Shiny Walls. And I'm the self-employed and the owner of OBX Picnic Company. I have been a member of the Otterbanks community since 2016. Our community is amazing. And as you know, people here are really kind and helpful. I feel so blessed to be a part of this community and to be able to raise my children here. I was born and raised in Ukraine. My family is from Lviv City, which is on the west of Ukraine. Me, my husband, and our son moved to the United States almost six years ago. We built our first house here. Our daughter was born here. And our home is here. But today, I cannot be more proud to be Ukrainian. It's 6:00 PM here, which means it's 1:00 AM in Ukraine. It's keep time. Apologize. And this will mark 12 days. It's the day 12 of the brutal Russian attack upon Ukraine and her people. My family is very busy right now. They're making camouflage, netting, welding tank defense hedgehogs, as they call them, having to take breaks to hide underground because of air attack warnings. My family and the Ukrainian people as a population are proud and determined set of the individuals. And right now, they're in the fight of their lives. Their actions and the actions of free people all over the world will determine the fate and the outcome of this conflict. I'm here to present this opportunity to help our community of Currituck County to donate on behalf of the Ukrainian people and the cause of democracy. We, the Ukrainian community of the Otterbanks, are partnering with the Rotary Club, which is a nonprofit organization, and will help us raise funds to support Ukraine. Our website, GoFundPage, and other links, how you can help, should be active and approved within another two days. This effort will directly support citizens of Ukraine who are being affected by the conflict. The money raised will directly, will go directly to purchase medical supplies, food, and other humanitarian supplies.
Keep going.
As needed to help people in the conflict region to survive and then rebuild. I know an overwhelming amount of people, business owners and citizens, are ready and willing to help out with this important cause. Please help us, help our global neighbors and your own neighbors, as there is a significant community of Ukrainians now living in Otterbanks, who all have families in the conflict region. I really appreciate your time and attention to this matter. And as one Japanese writer said, individually, we are one drop, but together, we are the ocean. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Do you have a name? You said you haven't established your, do you have a web address or your telephone is not open yet? Is that correct?
It's not open. I mean, it should be open. It should be approved. We are waiting for approval from Rotary Club.
Okay.
And I hope it's going to be available in the next two days.
Okay. So the people that are watching tonight, they should keep an eye. How would you like for them to get informed when it's available, I guess? Because we have people that watch.
I think, I mean, you will find us on the Facebook page. And we are trying to communicate with all counties, like Dare County, Currituck County, to let them know how they can support Ukrainians right now.
I guess, I would just say, maybe when you get that done, if you could maybe contact our clerk to the board, Leanne, get that information to her. And then we can discuss it maybe some way of making sure our community can find this information to help, any support they want to do.
I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
I was just going to ask your son, what grade is your son in?
He's in the fourth grade.
Do you have Ms. Williams as a teacher?
No, I have Ms. Hay.
I was saying, I've seen him at George's. I thought maybe he was there. So I've seen him.
He was playing tennis, probably, right?
Well, we thank you. And we know it's, it's got to be really stressful and painful and to know that's what's going on at your home country over there. So we appreciate you coming up and letting us know this. And I'm looking forward to getting that information to anybody who wants to help contribute.
Thank you for your support and your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will definitely check in. Thank you. God bless you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Okay, right now, I don't have anyone else signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who showed up late that didn't get a chance to sign up that would like to speak at public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to our Commissioner's report. And this evening, I'm going to start to my right. I'm going to start with Kevin McCord.
Like we stated earlier, Commissioner Etheridge had to go home. Commissioner Etheridge had to go home due to an illness. First off, I'd like to welcome our new HR Director. The other day, I had to bring some paperwork from the Sheriff's Office. And Melissa Futrell from the School Systems is our new HR Director here at the county. I'm very glad we got somebody on board to replace Sarah retiring. Good luck to her and good luck to Sarah on being retired. County staff, I had a call this week. I'm the Parks and Rec Advisory Commissioner that sits on that board. And I wanted to thank a parent, I'm not going to say his name. I got a phone call. He was complaining the right way about a situation and some nets that some of the soccer, soccer's kicked off for spring sports, even though it's, well, today was warm. But he called me. And like I said, I made a phone call to Jason Weeks. The next night, they had practice back-to-back nights. The, all the nets were already replaced. So I just, I mean, like I said, the county staff, instead of him going on social media on the Moyoc Page and berating us and saying that the county, this guy did it the right way, and I would commend him. And I commend Jason Weeks and his staff. I've said it again, I'll say it 100 times. We have good people that work here that care. That's obviously why they're doing the job. You know, so like I said, it's, Jason Weeks and his staff, I mean, within 24 hours, it was fixed, the problem. And the guy called me the next night and he was like, man, that was quick. So you follow the proper channels and protocol, things happen. So the other last thing is just, you know, springtime's coming. That means there's going to be more people coming to visit and the traffic's going to get a little bit busier. You know, obey, try to obey the laws on the roads and be careful and don't, you know, like I said, fuel is getting more expensive. So it's cheaper on fuel if you drive a little bit slower. And that's a proven fact. So maybe that'll help out on the little safety on the roads. There's a lot of construction on the south end on the roads. You know, I know they're working on that as well. So like I said, it springs around the corner and everybody will start to be going out and moving. Maybe not as much with the fuel prices, but that's it for me.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Paul Beaumont.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also, on the sports type thing, I was very surprised to learn that my granddaughter, who plays at Proquemmons County Basketball, is going to be, was selected for the All-Star team. She gets that, not from me. But she, the tournament is going to be at Currituck County, and that'll be Saturday. So the good news is, we don't have to drive far and her parents do. So that was, that's a neat, and it's a wonderful facility for those that haven't been there. Second item I wanted to bring up was, last Monday was the Fire EMS Advisory Board meeting. We try to hold, there are two districts, there are two fire districts within the county. One of them is in Corallo, the other one is in Knott's Island. And we try to, once a quarter, hold the FEAB in those specific fire districts. So Corallo's ticket was up last week. Chief Shortway does a wonderful job of providing refreshments for the group. Probably the major event of the evening was to recognize some of our EMS personnel, specifically Lieutenant Lawson, Jennifer Hoyt, Richard LaBounte, and Olivia Darty. On the 10th, and this is kind of in keeping on what else is going on tonight, but on the 10th of February, they were called out to what was finally determined to be a heart attack for a 47-year-old male. The patient, it was determined, had a 100% blockage. And they were on site incredibly fast. He wound up being transported to Nightingale, where he was flown to Norfolk Centerra, and he recovered. Interesting statistic, this type of a medical event, if it occurs outside of a hospital, your life expectancy is less than 6%. So absolutely top-notch care, kind of the asterisk to that is, they were presenting, you know, words for the EMTs involved. And he had another coronary event, so right there in the FEAB, slid the tables out of the way, slid the chairs out of the way, brought in the Stokes litter, loaded them up, and he got a second helicopter ride in less than 30 days. So he went back to Norfolk Centerra. But again, he's recovered well. And then just as a part of a PSA, heart disease is the leading cause of death for men in the United States. And kudos to the crew because they did an absolutely outstanding job, and that is why he's alive today. So God was good. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you. Couple things, I'll just let everybody know that as Commissioner McCord said, springtime's here, traffic's going to be, well, I guess it'll be picking up with the cost of gas, who knows? It'll be busy out there. They're going to be starting the paving down the south end of the county when the warmer weather hits here. So that'll even create more fun with the traffic, with the lane closures, to get that done. So just be careful out there in the roads, expect some construction in the south end of the county. The fire department's still running structure calls, structured fire calls, accident, vehicle accidents. It's lower Currituck, I can just tell you, they've been busy. And they still are. And they're not looking forward to the tourist season because they know what's coming with far as accidents. But they're, they wanted me to mention too, that the spaghetti dinner that they recently had at the station down there was a huge success. And they wanted to thank everyone who came out and supported the local Currituck Volunteer Fire Department, got to see the apparatus, take a tour, talk to the, talk to the volunteers there. I'm a volunteer, I help what I can these days, everything's busy. But I tell you, it takes a lot when you gear up and get out there in this heat, especially in the summertime, with these accidents and structured fires. So if you can get involved with our fire departments, please, they'll take any type of support, you know, with helping direct traffic. They'll train you, it's all free. So please, they're a vital part of our community, our volunteers. So anything you can do to help them out, they do appreciate that as well. That's for all of our volunteers throughout the county. And lastly, just, and I will mention this just because it was brought to me that the county's been working on dog parks throughout the county, and there's nothing on the south end of the county. So I had touched base with the Selena Jarvis, kind of in her district, that there was some interest of dog parks. So I'd asked the county manager if he could maybe look at some areas and just see what it costs, maybe, you know, fence in an area for some of our people to take their dogs to. So he's going to be working on that and bring the board something back on that. Other than that, just remember, daylight saving time's a Sunday. Don't forget, we get to enjoy brighter evenings when you get home. And be safe out there. And I will now turn it over to Commissioner Mike.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. You'd said earlier that we had a work session on the beach parking permits. I thought I'd just highlight that for a minute. We put a little bit of information out a few weeks ago on Facebook, and I think it was a little bit confusing. So I just want to take a minute. We'll, of course, when it comes up, talk about it at length as the ordinance change. But we're really looking at restricting the number of just weekly passes going forward. So as we work through that, we're looking at restricting them to 300 passes per week issued. For those of you that are familiar with it, in the past, we have only had, we had a 10-day pass, and we were averaging 900 or more a week last summer. So we are looking at reducing the amount of day trippers at the end of the day. For the residents of the county and specifically the Ford Drive area, you will not be affected by this. Your passes that you have gotten in the past, if you own a rental property, are still available to you. And if you live in the county, we're looking at using the decal that you have for solid waste as your entry to the beach, rather than having to come into the county offices and actually obtain a pass for yourself. So making it easier for our residents of the county is one of the goals, and then reducing the amount of traffic ultimately on the beach is the, is the greater, is the greater goal and hopefully for the greater good. So I just wanted to clear a little bit of the air on that, for people that saw that on, that we, that was what we were talking about tonight. And I believe we'll probably have that back to us for our next commissioner meeting in two weeks for adoption for this coming year. We're also looking at extending the season for that to go out into, from the beginning of May through the end of Sept, September to, for adoption. What's that?
April 30th is the first.
April 30th? Yeah, thank you. April 30th to October 1, I believe, at this point in time. So that's it for me, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Commissioner Etheridge?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Thursday, I joined fellow members of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' Risk Management Board of Trustees in Raleigh to conduct board business during its first-quarter business meeting for 2022. The risk management pool offers workman's compensation and liability and property coverage for counties and related entities throughout North Carolina. Members of the risk management pool enjoy comprehensive and affordable coverage specifically designed for local government exposure. Today, of the 100 counties in North Carolina, 71 are members of one or both of the risk management pools. During our meeting, safety incentive programs, longevity reward credit, multi-pool incentives, and other cost savings for counties were discussed and approved. And this will save our county some more money, and we appreciate that. And also appreciate the young lady who spoke tonight. And our prayers certainly go out to the people of Ukraine and the people here in America, and certainly hope it can be resolved fairly quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And Commissioner Jarvis?
Thank you. It's March for Meals time. A little bit about this program. On March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. For more than 45 years, these critical programs, that most people call Meals on Wheels, have delivered more than just nutritious meals to our homebound seniors. And this has happened in virtually every community across the country. Our dedicated staff and volunteers who deliver these meals each week provide a vital lifeline and a connection to the community, which sometimes is all it takes to keep a senior in their home where they want to be. Throughout the pandemic, meals have been delivered on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays. But starting June 1st, the program will return to five days, Monday through Friday deliveries. And with that comes a need for more volunteers for this important program. I encourage you to get involved with this program. To do that, you may call any of our senior centers across the county for more information. And I encourage you to do it because truly, it is the most rewarding thing I do each month. Another item that I have, last month, COA received an independent report about the economic value that this college brings to the Albemarle region. The numbers that were shared with us were incredible. And I just want to take a few minutes to highlight a few of these and give this data to our citizens. The first one, one out of every 33 jobs in the Albemarle region is supported by the activities of College of the Albemarle and its students. Two, the impact on alumni is $83.4 million in added income, which is the equivalent of our region hosting 14 World Series. Three, for every dollar spent, there is a return of $5.40 in earnings of our students. And that's important because our contribution that we give to COA then goes a long ways to help the economy. And finally, the total annual impact of COA on the Albemarle region is $105 million. COA truly changes lives and makes our community thrive. I am proud to be on the Board of Trustees, and I'm proud that our county supports such a valuable community college. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. And I'll just say, I think you do a fantastic job in that board supporting and representing our county. And my wife and I are COA alums, and we're proud that we went there. One thing I did want to add, I forgot when, before Commissioner Etheridge had to leave, he wanted to just bring up in his commission report that this past weekend, the Chamber had the Biz Fest for a lot of local businesses in our area. And it was a great turnout and support for our local businesses. Please keep them in mind, they're an important part of our community. The small business is what keeps things going and employs people in our county. I was there as well. It was a good turnout. And I just wanted to thank the Chamber again for doing a great job with that. And the businesses that showed up there, I think they were very pleased too with the outcome. So just wanted to say thank you out there to everybody who supported that. And thank you to the small businesses out there in this county because it does mean a lot for us.
Mr. Chairman, it was a good, it was a really good turnout. I went for about an hour and a half myself.
Okay, with that, the next item is the county manager's report and county attorney report.
As Commissioner McCord said, we welcomed last week Melissa Futrell as the Human Resources Director for the county. Melissa is no stranger to the county. When you see her, you may remember her from her time hosting Bird's Eye View a number of years ago. And she comes to us from the Currituck County School System. She is a product of the Currituck County Schools, having grown up part of her life in Water Lily. And then she was Public Information Officer at Currituck County Schools. And then for approximately the last eight years, have been working in human resources there. She's a very dynamic person. I encourage you all to come by to visit her. She, she has a lot of energy, and I think she's going to bring a lot of great things to our human resources program and to our employees. Last Tuesday night, I attended the 4H Awards Dinner. What an impressive group of young people and parents who support them. That is one heck of an organization. I grew up in Raleigh, Wake County, a very urban area. And I know there was a 4H program there, but being a city guy, I didn't really participate in 4H. But I'm kind of sorry that I didn't because these are such well-spoken, just wonderful young people that are working on wonderful things. They did note, I think, in June, Currituck will be hosting the district or regional competition at the middle, at the Currituck Middle School. And so we can look forward to having a good number of these great 4Hers from around our region coming to Currituck. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for that report. And the next item is our administrative reports. And I'd like to ask if the, our county sheriff, Matt Byker, would come forward, please. We're going to be, the Sheriff's Office is going to be recognized in presentation of advanced law enforcement certificates. And thank you for coming this evening, sir. I'm going to turn it over to you to...
Thank you, and thank our board for allowing us to come to the commissioners' meeting and recognize our officers. The first recognition that I want to do is one of our officers has achieved his advanced law enforcement certificate. We think this is a very important, significant event in a law enforcement officer's career.
I think, I think they can capture you in the front. Well, if you want to get, that's fine. Come on up here.
The North Carolina Sheriff's Education, Training, and Standards Commission, by virtue of authority vested in the laws of the state, in recognition of the attainment and training and educational objectives commensurate with a role of a professional law enforcement officer, and the personal devotion and service to the people of North Carolina, the Attorney General and the Chairman, and the members of the North Carolina Sheriff's Education and Training Standards Commission, moving of authority vested in the name of the laws of the state, you hereby award Garland Thomas Acres this advanced law enforcement certificate. Congratulations. We are very happy that first of all, this recognition ceremony is to let the community know that we are striving for the highest levels and the highest standards for our officers, and to recognize our officers in terms of great job. Thank you.
Okay, the next item we have is, and I've asked the sheriff to... Okay, the next item we have is, and I've asked the sheriff to stay up there, we have, he's gonna present some resolutions honoring Sergeant Buddy Capps, Corporal Stephen Gilbert, Sergeant Michael Corbell, and Deputy Weston Godfrey for lifesaving acts.
Yes, I would like to recognize a couple of officers who could not be here. A couple of our officers could not be here, and a couple of, so we'll go ahead and recognize those officers that were able to be here. And these were actual lifesaving events. We will recognize our officers and let the community know the steps they're taking. Our officers, a lot of officers are trained and went to the basic E and T course, and it's really paid dividends for us and for the community.
He's got the resolution number seven.
The committee has prepared a resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners in appreciation for the service of Sergeant Nathan Capps to the citizens of Currituck County, North Carolina, whereas on May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, Currituck County Sheriff Sergeant Blake Capps responded to a residential call in the Currituck, North Carolina, where he found an occupant of the home in a life-threatening circumstances, in a life-threatening circumstances, and whereas Sergeant Capps entered the home and performed medical aid with an automated external defibrillator, rendering care until relieved by emergency medical services personnel. And whereas Sergeant Capps, Sergeant Capps' immediate selfless lifesaving actions to another is a credit to him and the Currituck County Sheriff's Office, for which the citizens of Currituck County are grateful. Now therefore be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of Currituck County, acknowledges the lifesaving actions of Sergeant Nathan Capps and extends its appreciation for this dedication, excuse me, this dedicated public service.
Thank you.
There was another officer who couldn't be here, Stephen Gilbert, he couldn't be here tonight, he actually was a hospital assistant. Next. This is a resolution of the Currituck County Board of Commissioners in appreciation for the service of Deputy Weston Godfrey to the citizens of Currituck County, North Carolina, whereas on June tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Currituck County Sheriff's Deputy Weston Godfrey responded to a residential call in Currituck, North Carolina, where he found an occupant of the home in a, in a life-threatening circumstance, and whereas Deputy Godfrey rendered lifesaving aid until relieved by emergency medical service personnel. And whereas Deputy Godfrey's immediate selfless lifesaving actions to another is a credit to him and the Currituck County Sheriff's Office, for which the citizens of Currituck County are grateful. Now therefore be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of Currituck County, acknowledges the lifesaving actions of Deputy Weston Godfrey and extends its appreciation for the dedicated public service. And there was Sergeant, Sergeant Mike Corbell, was there also, he couldn't be here tonight. They both had red aid. This is very important to us, and I want to thank the Commissioners for allowing us to come up very important, necessarily, and recognizing officers. And thank you, and thank the county very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, on an official note, I wanted the, I wanted the sheriff to go ahead and read each resolution so they could hear them. So again, unofficial, I'd like to make a motion to, to adopt these resolutions presented tonight.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, thank you. Thanks again, we appreciate your service to this county, what you do for us, and the life, you put your, every day you put your life on the line.
Chairman, can I say one thing?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Corporal Gilbert, he helps coach the high school baseball team, and he's there tonight because of that. So he, which I guess maybe at our next meeting, we might present him his, if the schedule works, and Sergeant Corbell had some situation today, so that couldn't have him to be here. So like I said, as the sheriff stated, too, those two guys had something, which, I mean, Gilbert gives back to the community in coaching the ball teams.
And they, and you're right, I mean, there's, they do a lot for the community, other than being out there protecting you, they get involved out there. So it's, we appreciate all that. Okay, um, thank you, everyone. Can we take a few minutes?
Yeah, a couple of those guys gotta work first thing in the morning.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's, I understand, understood.
I thought Kevin was the only one that worked.
He's always, yeah.
He didn't today.
All right, the next item is new business, it's gonna be consideration of amendment to beach rescue lifeguard services contract, and I'll turn it over to our county manager.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this was a matter that the board discussed at your recent retreat. Our beach lifeguard contractor has requested an amendment to the agreement for the, for the remainder of this fiscal year and the next fiscal year, to increase the contract by seventy thousand dollars in each of those fiscal years, in order to be able to pay lifeguards commensurate with those lifeguard, those lifeguards that are being paid in Dare County, so that we can kind of defray the competition that evidently is now occurring in the lifeguard world. Staff recommends adoption of the amendment.
Wait for approval.
Second.
A motion is second, any further discussion on this?
I just want to say, those guys, I work the beach, Ocean Rescue does a phenomenal job. The saves that they make, it's crazy, how many saves that they have.
Constant.
Constant. I mean, you're out, I mean, it's, they do an awesome job, and like I said, they were trying to poach some of our employees due to the competition, and, you know, you can't, I mean, we have clean and safe beaches, so we can't just have clean, we gotta have both.
And, and as kind of a side comment on that, we may be unique, but we may not, but all of our lifeguards are U.S. citizens, so several of the other townships use the H-one, N-one, H-one.
J-one.
That's right, that's that other virus.
That's that other virus, right?
To get rid of their horse, what do you? Yes. They don't have to worry about saves. Anyways, so, you know, and that's, that's kudos to Michael Cherry, and as well as, he basically wrote, authored, and implemented the first training program online that does just about all of their training prior to their even beginning to start, so kudos to him.
May I ask a question? Did you say it was seventy thousand per year, or that's total, correct, according to?
No, well, I think the agenda title page says it's thirty-five thousand dollars in each fiscal year, seventy thousand dollars.
Total.
Yeah, okay.
So it cleans up the contract.
All right, any other discussions? Okay, we have motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Clean, safe beaches.
Okay, the next item on our new business is a resolution supporting North Carolina Department of Transportation dedicating a portion of North Carolina Highway six fifteen on Knott's Island as the Chief Scott A. Morrison Memorial Highway.
Do we have any? I'll just give you a little introduction. The, the Board of Transportation, we understand, is, is in favor or willing to dedicate a portion of NC Highway six fifteen on Knott's Island in honor, in memory of Chief Morrison, but asks that the county adopt a resolution agreeing to that designation, and then they, the Department of Transportation will then take care of the rest of the process in order to erect a sign in memory of Chief Morrison.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to read in the resolution, if that's okay. It's the resolution of the Board of Commissioners supporting the dedication of a portion of North Carolina Highway sixteen, six fifteen on Knott's Island in honor of Chief Scott Morrison. Whereas Scott A. Morrison, a native of New Jersey, moved to North Carolina in nineteen ninety-three, and in the year two thousand, settled in Knott's Island, where he and his wife Jessica raised two children, Caitlin and Sean. And whereas, upon moving to Knott's Island, Mr. Morrison immediately became a member of Knott's Island Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas, in two thousand and ten, after many years of dedicated service on Knott's Island community as a firefighter, Scott Morrison became chief of the Knott's Island Volunteer Fire Department. And whereas, on March third, two thousand and thirteen, Chief Morrison tragically lost his life after working to coordinate fire suppression activities for a brush fire on Knott's Island. And whereas, Chief Morrison is remembered as one who always committed to public service, and it would be fitting and proper to pay tribute to Chief Morrison by dedicating a roadway in Currituck County in his honor. Now therefore be it resolved that the Currituck County Board of Commissioners supports dedicating a portion of North Carolina Highway six fifteen located on Knott's Island, North Carolina, to Chief Scott A. Morrison, and requests appropriate markers or signs containing the designation be erected on the roadway by North Carolina Department of Transportation. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be poured to the North Carolina Department of Transportation, North Carolina Representative Bobby Haney, and to the family of Chief Scott A. Morrison. And with that, I will move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, thank you. Carries. The next item, before we vote on, is the consent agenda, and I'd like the county manager, if he could just, just mention again, there's an area that we need to remove from that that was duplicated.
Yes, there's a budget amendment that appears on page twenty. A budget amendment that appears on page twenty-eight of your agenda package, which is actually a duplication of a budget amendment that appears on page twenty-four, and that was discussed during your work session. So if the board is so inclined, I'd recommend a motion to approve the consent agenda, less that budget amendment that appears on page twenty-eight.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the budget amendment on page twenty-eight as a duplicate.
You have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Okay, at this time, I will recess from our regular meeting and move into the special meeting of the Tourism and Development Authority. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to our county manager. For consideration of modification to grant award for Martin Farm and Winery Peach Blossom Market Event, excuse me.
It was to cover some unanticipated costs. Costs went up, I believe, between when they applied and currently.
Yes, and this is part of your event funding program that is recommended to you by the Tourism Advisory Board, and as Commissioner White said, there was unexpected increase, and so staff is recommending that there be a modification to the grant agreement in the amount set forth in the budget amendment.
Full approval.
Second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, that's for a motion to adjourn from the Special Meeting Tourism Development Authority.
Move to-
Move into the-
I think there's some budget amendments that need to be approved.
Oh, I thought we, I thought we approved the budget. Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, I thought that was all the budget amendments we had under the TDA.
It's on page fifty, or page sixty.
I'm sorry, okay.
Thought that was Kitty's motion was, I'm moving to approve.
That's, okay. All right, well then, we have some further budget amendments to approve under the TDA.
That's for the Ocean Rescue Beach Services Contract, to carry them through the end of the year.
Okay.
And the tourism promotion funds to run fiber.
Yes, wildlife resources and maritime museum expenditure.
Need to approve.
Okay. Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, so I missed that portion of it there. Okay, now I'll ask for a motion to close our special meeting tourism, move into these, pardon, excuse me?
You're doing great.
Yeah, yeah, motion. There's so many different things we're going with, and move into the oceans, hands of water.
You want to entertain a motion in a second to adjourn?
Yeah, adjourn, yes, okay, okay, yeah. Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we're gonna move into the special meeting, oceans, hands of water, Suez District Board.
This is a budget amendment just to increase budgeted funds for increased testing chemicals cost and use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, aye. All opposed, okay, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Now I'll ask for a motion to adjourn from our Suez, motion, have a second from Commissioner McCord, any further discussions? All in favor, aye, all opposed. Now I'll reconvene into our regular meeting and move into closed session, closed session pursuant to GS one forty-three dash three eighteen point one one A five to establish or instruct county staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the county in negotiating the material terms of a contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase or exchange located at twenty-eight seventy-eight Currituck Highway, Currituck, North Carolina, and owned by King Fisher Co., Inc., to be used for any public purpose. And that will take a short, sorry?
Second.
I'll second the motion together.
Second. Who made the motion?
You did.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And Kitty, Kitty seconded it.
You're tired tonight, aren't you?
I am tired, I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, take, take a recess real quick before we get into it.